At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for August 5, 2014, 4:00 PM to order first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What you wish is?
Also move.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See a none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. At this time, we're going to jump ahead in the agenda. We're going to go to item 6J and have John Burmeister give us a presentation here.
All right, very good. If it's clear, I'll talk about both the rating report and then as well as the bid tabulation.
Sounds great.
Okay. Well, starting out, what wanted to mention earlier today, we did solicit proposals from underwriters and then for preparing for the bond sale, we did visit with Moody's Investor Service and I'm pleased to tell you that they did reconfirm your AA2 rating. This year, it's in particular very important because they did revise their methodology. They switched 10% of the rating criteria from the economy to the debt and that's resulted in, I think, about 27 downgrades of AAA rated cities, several AA rated cities as well. So, the criteria, in my opinion, has been a lot tougher and you've seen a lot more downgrades associated with that. The city, if you look through a lot of your different criteria, your fund balance very strong, your debt's very rapidly paid, you're stable, your general fund has been growing slowly with small surpluses, conservative management. All of those factors accounted for the AA2 rating, which by the way, is only two notches from a AAA. So, it goes without saying that that's a very strong rating, particularly for the size of the community. They do look at the value of your community. It's about 400, excuse me, 847 million. They always like to see over a billion, so you're very highly rated relative to the size of your community, so you should be very proud of that. That also then translates into a lot of people that are fighting over to get your bonds, as well as providing you with very low interest rates on your bonds. There should be a results of sale tabulation in your packet along line. You can see here, this is three pages deep, there's actually one, two, three, there's actually eight different bids here that you'll see. The name of the bidder there is on the left, Raymond James and Associates, UMB Bank, Piper Jaffray, Robert W. Baird, Northland Securities, VMO Capital, City Securities Corporation out of Indianapolis, Indiana. That's a new one that I haven't seen particularly lately. And then also Sternke out of Birmingham, Alabama. So, you're seeing a lot of the local players here, Kansas, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, Chicago, and then St. Petersburg, Florida here with is the Raymond James. So, you're getting a national draw of underwriters as well. All that helps to buy down the interest rate on the bonds. If you look at the Raymond James bid and kind of go to the lower right-hand corner, you can see a TIR, that's true interest rate, and you can see that the bid on this was 1.6197%. And so, that's a very aggressive bid. You can see the cover on that, UMB at a 170, you can see a 171, 174, 185, and then the high being a 1.96%. So, a big difference in interest rates, so it's always good to do that competitive process to allow people to sharpen their pencil. This bond size, we originally went out to the market with 3,490, and because the cost came in a little lower, we were able to reduce that par amount to 3,470. We had a new money and then Reg and I looked through an opportunity for the city to save money. So, a piece of this transaction, 2.8 million was for new money and about 650,000 was a refunding of the 2007 bonds, which are coming due in June, December 1, 2014. Those bonds are carrying 4% interest rates. And if you look at the front page of this results of sale, you can see that we're replacing those with 0.2%, 0.4%, and 0.75% relative to the 4%. We had targeted, I think, around 30,000 hours worth of savings. We're going to receive $38,000 of savings, and that's only three years, so it's about $10,000 a year of savings to the city by refunding that. And there was no really additional cost of issuance to that. We rolled it into the new money, saved a little bit by rolling this in. It's the current call, so it worked out very efficiently. In fact, I think one of the actions is to approve the notice of redemption to call those in at some point this evening as well. And so, with that, I'll open it up to any questions, and then I'll also, if there aren't any, I'll recommend that the city council award the bonds to Raymond James and Associates at a true interest rate. You can see at a 1.622%, you can see right in the middle of that page under the winning bid, we did resize that, so the end TIC is 1.6224% with the par amount of 3,470 to Raymond James and Associates. I'll just open up to any questions you may have.
Go ahead. Anybody?
Sure. Just as a procedural matter, before we do anything else, I will move to receive notification that Moody's Investor Service has assigned an AA2 rating.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to receive the notification. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Okay, no. We're on 6K. Any questions?
Same, same presentation.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the awarding of sale. Any more discussion?
Thanks for saving us money.
Thank you. Yes, yeah.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Now, we'll go back to A. Consider motion to approve the issuance of temporary on-sale liquor permit for the Herman Monument Society. That'd be for September 6, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to prove it. Any discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 3A, number one, consider resolution approving the request from Steve Seitzfeld on behalf of Martin Luther College for a simple lot division of a property located at 1722 Brestwood Road.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to approve with the conditions, the request for simple lot divisions.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion?
Just briefly, when this came before the Planning Commission, basically, the college has sort of an odd piece of property that they're, you know, dividing so that they can sell, sell the property that they're not really making use of to the adjoining landowner. So, it's really just a very simple lot division.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, number two, consider resolution approving the application for Rick Opitz requesting a conditional use permit to locate a one-apartment building unit in the building situated on the property zone B3, General Business District at 419 Second South Street.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading with the condition.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion?
Well, again, I was, this came before the Planning Commission, and basically, this is a building that is being used by the applicant at the present time to, you know, for a hobby, and he wants to be able to move there part-time if that suits his lifestyle. There really weren't any concerns or anyone who came forward to object, and so the Planning Commissioner did unanimously approve approval, recommend approval with the one condition.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, number two, consider approval of a petition for Eric Bodie on behalf of Barcelay Incorporated to rezone from Part B1, General Business District to B3, or excuse me, Limited Business District to B3, General Business District, the property at 301 North German Street.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Yes, when this, there was quite a bit of discussion on this and the, the next item. Basically, this is the property at Third North and North German. There were a number of questions by both the commission and the neighbors about the location of the, of the proposed condominium relative to the neighbors to the north and, you know, how it would be laid out and those sorts of things. But there really wasn't any particular opposition. Basically, the, the staff felt that this was an appropriate use of this property, that it would allow the condominium to be located, you know, closer to the sidewalks on either area and leave more open space between the neighbor and the, and the condominium, and it seemed like it reflected a trend, a growing trend of having this type of sort of downtown residential property. And so, although there was a lot of discussion, there really was not any opposition. And so, they, the Planning Commission unanimously approved, recommended approval after, after the public hearing and after the meeting.
Ms. Webster?
Yes.
On this, do they have any consideration about where they're going to park?
Yes, yes. The, if I get this wrong, I know the, I know the staff will jump in for me. There, there is a requirement that there be one and a half stalls of parking for each unit, and I believe the plan is to have more than that. Am I right? Yeah, the plan is to have two for each, each of the proposed units.
Now, these are going to be alley parking, then?
No, most of the parking will be, I'm going to say underground, but it really isn't underground. It's more or less on the first floor.
Uh-huh.
Dave Schnenberg, Community Development Director. The applicant is proposing to provide two forms of parking. One is, you know, garage space that is on the first floor of the building, and then there would also be surface parking provided as well.
Okay. Because there's such a, I mean, the way that, that side from the sidewalk to the, the ground level is so steep in that, I was wondering how they were going to?
Right. I think that if I'm remembering correctly, most of the parking spaces would be accessed from the alley. Most people would drive through the alley and then turn right and either park on the surface parking, or a door would open and you would go into the underground. There, I think there's three underground, I say underground, but, you know, first floor, I think there's three garage stalls that you, that would be entered by German Street, but that, but the parking was something that we did discuss.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Go ahead.
Uh-oh.
Well?
I've been looking at the, excuse me, looking at the city code, Section 9.18 subdivision five in the city council approval indicates that an amendment would be effective upon a four-fifths vote, and we have two counselors who are not present tonight. I understand that this would be directing the city attorney to prepare the ordinance, but it would also be approving the petition. And I'm wondering, in light of this requirement, if it would be appropriate to maybe table this until the next meeting, to make sure that we've got at least four counselors here.
And is the applicant here or not? Nope. At the Planning Commission meeting and the public hearing, they request, the applicant was questioned on plans for when construction would start. And my recollection is that there wasn't a real tight timetable, that actually the construction plans would not really be, begin until spring of 2015. And in light of that, I will, I would be, I think I'd be comfortable with a motion to table this until we have a full council, just to avoid any, any issue of whether or not we need four fifths.
I agree.
All right.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. So, on 3A, number four, is that the same then?
Well, the-
Or can we approve that?
I, I, I think that we should probably table this as well-
This as well, yeah.
-because, because it's for a conditional use permit for the B3 General Business District. So, in light of that, I will move that we table this matter until our next meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table 3A, number four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 4A, we'll skip over. Tim Pallini, Penny, I should say, was supposed to be here and make a presentation, and he's not here yet. Maybe he's thinking it's a 5:00 meeting or whatever, so we'll give him some time to show up. So, we'll go to 5A, number one and two. Consider an ordinance annexing the property of the city of New Ulm presented to the Minnesota statute, section 414.033, number one. Second reading of ordinance number 14-118, fourth series. And number two, motion to adopt ordinance number 14-118, fourth series.
I would move that we waive the second reading of this ordinance regarding the annexation of property.
I would second that.
We got a motion and a second to waive the second reading. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries.
And then I'll move to adopt the ordinance.
We got a motion, second?
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 5B, consider motion authorizing the payment of the emergency work completed on a storm sewer infrastructure repair on Center Street, which is county, state aid highway number 13, in amount of $83,516.99.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to approve the payment to M&amp;R Paving and Excavating. Any more discussion?
Do we have an idea of about how much of this would be reimbursed, possibility?
Mr. President and counselors, the reason we wanted to have it authorized is to make sure that the amount would be eligible. We're going to meet with FEMA, I believe, next week to, to give them the amount. I'm not sure. I'm hoping 90, 95%.
Oh, okay. Good.
Sometimes it's more, so they seemed very interested in helping us with this and some other expenses.
Good.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6A, consider motion confirming the appointment of Lonnie Carpenter to the Energy Awareness Commission.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6B, consider motion confirming the appointment of Dale Gluth to the Monument and Cemetery Commission.
I'll offer that motion.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6C, first reading of ordinance number 14-119, fourth series, repealing section 4.55 of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to photographers in said city.
You to, to read?
Read on.
Go for it.
Ordinance number 14-119, fourth series, city of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota. An ordinance repealing section 4.55 of the city code of the city of New Ulm relative to photographers. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of New Ulm, section one, that section 4.55 of the city code of the city of New Ulm photographers is hereby repealed. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced 30 days from and after its adoption, approval and publication, adopted by the city council of the city of New Ulm this blank day of blank 2014, provision to be signed by the president.
Thank you. Item 6D, first reading of ordinance 14-120, fourth series, amending section 8.29 of the city code, city of New Ulm relative to keeping animals in said city.
Mr. President?
Yes.
In light of the fact that we only have three counselors here, and there was quite a bit of discussion and a split vote on, on this ordinance, I would move that we table this matter to our next meeting so that we have a full council there, here.
I'd second that. And perhaps we could insert somewhere in there, the, the name of the inspector that's going to be going around, we would call him a coop cop.
Ay, 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 ay.
Thank you, Pinky. We got a motion and a second to table until the next meeting. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6E, consider resolution to accept donations offered to the city parking rec. department.
So moved the, offer the resolution with reading?
We got a motion and a, oh, do we have a second?
Oh, we have a second. I'm just looking, reading all the, all the love, all the wonderful donations.
All right, we got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6F, consider motion to approve temporary construction easements for the 2014 MSAS Improvement Project and authorized payment.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? See a none? All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6G, consider motion approved a professional service agreement with Brown InterTech to provide materials testing services for the 2014 MSAS Improvement Project.
I'll offer the motion.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to approve a professional service agreement with Brown InterTech for $27,869.
And I just, just so that I understand, this is required because we're using both federal and federal grant and state aid money?
Yes, Mr. President, that's, that's correct, and it will be 100% reimbursable.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 6H, consider a resolution approving MinDOT Office of Aeronautics Amendment Number One to Grant Agreement Number 05321.
So moved. Oh, I'll, excuse me, I'll offer that resolution, waive the reading approving the amendments to the grant agreement and authorizing appropriate signatures.
And I'll, I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6I, consider a resolution accepting a grant offer from the Federal Aviation Administration for land acquisition for runway 1533 extension.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, accepting the grant.
I'll second that.
We got a motion and a second to offer resolution, waive the reading, accepting the grant. Any discussion?
Well, I just want to make sure it's clear, this is to purchase the, purchase the property after much discussion and issues.
Mr. President, yes, this is for the Clear Zone off of the south end of primary runway 1533. It's not a new purchase. We've been working on this for probably three or four years and went through eminent domain and finally have the final costs, and this is the federal grant to pay, reimburse for 95% of the cost for the acquisition. And there's a few other things that are added into it, such as the removal of driveway and some engineering costs and legal fees, but it's basically the 95% of the total cost to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Rockvam?
Yes.
Counselor Webster?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 6I, consider motion to receive notification from the Finance Director regarding hearing requirements for the proposed 2015 city of New Ulm budget calendar. Reggie? Or just accept the dates? They're all in front of us.
Anything new?
There is nothing new. President Schmitz and counselors, I'm just trying to get to the sheet here. Basically, this is pretty much the same dates as we've had in the past. We'll, we will hear the preliminary budget, the first meeting in September. Hopefully, then, at least approve the preliminary, and then we will have the truth and taxation hearing and so forth, as always, in December. So, if we need to have meetings in between those, can always be set up at a later time, so.
Have we talked with department heads regarding what might be possible for next year in terms of budgets that they might be looking at in terms of as they're preparing them, coming into them? With department heads?
Yes, we've talked to department heads. Actually, the budget is pretty much in from departments at this point, so right now, we're just kind of going through that fine-tuning process to, you know, get to a point where we can have all the pieces there. So, there are some pieces that we have to wait until first half of August to be able to try to get, but for the most part, the departments are, are done, except for a few of the overall pieces that make it all fit in the end.
Well, I think, I think it might be really helpful if we could have our meeting going over the budget at least three or four weeks before we have to certify, before we have to certify the amount, so that if we have any questions or, or issues with the budget as it's, you know, I, I think we'd, I'd like to have plenty of time to look at the budget this year.
Correct.
So, is that clear?
Counselor Webster, does that mean the preliminary budget that we-
Right.
-initially approve in September?
Right. That, yes, that's what I meant.
Okay.
Right. And, and so what, and the reason I mentioned that is that you said that, you know, by the end of August, you should be, you should have enough figures to be able to, to put it together. Did I understand that correctly?
Right. I mean, right now, we are putting the finishing touches on, I guess. We, you know, we haven't spread out the LGA, the property taxes. There's a couple of expenditure numbers I have to wait on yet. You know, once we have all that, then I can, I'll pretty much have it done by, or a good share of it done by probably mid-August to that third week. You know, and then I just have to, so I could send out like a detail or something like that that people could look through.
That would be very helpful.
Where the counselors could look through.
It would be very helpful.
Because we're less than two weeks away from the middle of August now.
Right.
It won't be the final document, but I can certainly just print out and do it to a PDF and send that out to, and you can start looking through it.
Any thoughts or comments on it that you might want to relate now, or you want to wait?
It's not too pretty right now.
Uh-oh.
All the more reason-
I must sharpen my knife again, not my axe.
All the more reason to start looking at it right away.
Yes, exactly.
There's really not any added programs or anything, of course. It's just basically status quo, but there's certain expenditures that are taking a hit, a hit again at this point, so.
Yeah.
And one of those will be covered shortly.
Right.
Yes, we're going to add to the next item.
So- So, I mean, Brian and I haven't met yet to go through it either, so. Once we go through it, then we can send something out, possibly.
Well, I don't mean to rush the product so you get it out before it's done, but on the, on the other hand, I just don't want to wait till the very last minute, so that we end up-
Just have a gun to your head, yeah.
Yeah. Right. So, we have to certify it because the deadline is there, so, thank you. So, I move that we receive the Finance Director's report regarding the requirements in the proposed budget calendar.
Seconded.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 6M, consider motion to adjust the 2014 budget for administration salaries and administration wellness program. Reggie, would you like to touch on that?
Yes, I'd like to know about this.
Sure. This is a program that management has kind of been taking a look at, or considering to try to implement for the last probably three, four years, mainly due to rising insurance cost. And basically, what we did this year was, we got together an employee group that meets on insurance, and we asked them to meet and to discuss a wellness program and what we can maybe do to try to improve health of employees, and which will not only help the employees, but also, of course, help the employer as far as the insurance costs. So, it's kind of a win-win situation. There are plenty of articles out there. We've attached one of them from King County, and it's something that we're hoping will help in the future. So, it's not something that's going to help immediately, of course. It's something that will take some time, so.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Well, I just, I, a couple of things I wanted to talk about is, as I understand it, the money is being moved over to start an incentive program? Is that what I understand?
Correct. It, we've had some turnovers, you know, so basically, for this year, we're just taking some of that money that we're saving on salaries, and we're just putting it towards this program for incentives. We're also doing the same, or I'll be asking to do the same at the PUC also.
Now, and I just want to know, would the incent, can you tell me the types of incentives that you're looking at? I thought of, I thought of just plain cash. I thought of, you know, reducing the insurance payment. I thought of, you know, earning extra paid time off, or, you know, those are the three that I talked about. I'm just wondering if, what, what this group is talking about.
Actually, all of those things have been talked about. Right now, what, actually, this Wednesday night through August, every, every Wednesday night, they've actually put together a time to meet at seven o'clock on Wednesday nights at German Park, I believe it is, to walk, bike, run, jog, kind of as a whole group. And to try to build up some interest in that and to encourage employees to get together at those times. They'll be looking at other programs like that that are low-cost. But as far as the incentives right now, we found out that Heart of New Ulm is going to be doing some screening this fall, so we're going to try to, we're working with them to try to piggyback on that to get some screenings done and to try to get employees there. We're looking at just a cash, a small cash incentive to get them to go to that and to do the screening.
All right. Stay at-
Other than that, after that, it may be some smaller drawing prizes if you meet certain goals and so forth.
Okay. I hadn't thought about that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 7A, consider acceptance of a list of claims paid in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Foes, no? Motion carries. Item 7B, consider approval of a list of claims to be paid in the amount of one million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, no? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I, I think we vote, I think we voted on the, on the budget, adjusting the 2014 budget for the wellness program without a motion and a second.
I didn't have anybody either. I wasn't sure.
Okay. I will make that motion.
And I'll second it.
All right.
Okay. We got a motion and a second now. All in favor, say aye.
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 Foes, no?
All right.
Motion carries.
Just don't want any problems.
Thought, maybe I just didn't hear it.
No.
Okay. Now, we can go back to number four, but since Mr. Penny isn't here yet.
Okay.
I guess maybe he's on the road or got the wrong time or missed us completely, and hopefully, he forgot us, so.
I do have one, I do have one item-
Okay.
That the, the intensity seems to be getting hotter regarding Summit. Do we have a date when they're going to start and take a look at possibly finishing the, the reconstruction of Summit?
Yeah, we have had several discussions with the contractor from the 2012 project. They are going to deliver a work program and a schedule to us. Unfortunately, time is on our side. The longer we wait, we've had some settlement issues. If we would have repaired it June-
Yes.
We probably would have had more developed. So, we have gone back and forth with some discussion, should we do some patching, kind of level things out and wait till next year? So, we'll bring that back to the council and make sure you're comfortable with it. Eventually, they've done a small patch that's going to be milled and overlaid, so it's, we're just trying to give it some time right now.
Because that's smaller, the two patches are already starting to do some sinking and-
The worst thing, I don't want to have a, a complete fix and then have to do it again.
Do it again, yeah.
So, we're kind of monitoring what's happening there.
Yeah, because there are different, different people end up with different numbers of bumps in the road. I think the highest I've had is forty-seven bumps, you know? And I think the least was, late last week was at nine. So, anyway.
It was a challenging project, but thankfully, the underground will not have to be done for another hundred and fifty years, so that's over with.
Okay. That's what I had. Thank you.
Okay.
It's on, it'll be in the paper and it'll be, it's on TV, so, yeah. You heard it, right here.
Think you took care of it. All right. No more business to be concluded. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.